Okay.
I get the papers and stuff here.
Yes, thank you. Part of my memorization is to go back through and write my index.
I know.
Well, I mean, the writing process is an important part of thinking process. You take your notes.
That's what I'm saying, that's why. Usually go through it.
Just gonna be there for a couple of minutes.
So she's gonna be our attorney, too?
No, she will be here in just a minute. Motivating and stepping into two places.
Yeah, he could do everything. We'll be done in about, I don't know, 10 minutes.
Yeah, you guys are laughing.
Bring the rest of the team on.
So you're volunteer.
They can all pick and choose what they want to talk about.
What was that?
He doesn't anymore?
No, thank you.
Sometimes it gets confusing.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. We have a series of public hearings for this evening, which we will enter into momentarily. Before we do that, however, we have some housekeeping business to take care of by way of action on the minutes of our previous meeting. Those minutes have been distributed to the commission members in advance of this meeting, and we will now consider a motion for action on the minutes from our May 28 meeting.
Move approval of the minutes of May 28, 2024.
I have an amendment.
Oh, second for discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, for discussion, yeah, okay. So the issue is regarding the item for Z 2868. Second item on the agenda was the amendment package for the rezone text. The discussion of that, or the action of that that's recorded in a minute states that Commissioner Lentz moved to refer the rezone text amendments, application Z 2868, for review by the Syracuse Common Council. Commissioner Bowler seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously. The issue of my concern that I would like to raise is that the Planning Commission is actually charged with not just reviewing the document and sending it to the Common Council for action, but is charged to either make comments or a recommendation. And by and large, the minutes, I mean, are minutes that I've complimented the staff for the quality of our minutes in recent meetings, which is absolutely correct. I still do that. There's a double-edged sword there, though, because the more minutes, the more words you put down there, the more likely it is that need to have a correction. So in this particular case, we are charged to make a recommendation or comments when we send something to the Common Council. So in this particular instance, I would prefer that that particular clause read, Commissioner Lentz moved to refer the proposed rezoning text amendments, Z 2868, with a positive declaration for action by the Syracuse Common Council.
For to clarify your intent in that motion.
Right.
Okay. Are the makers and the seconders, the secondor of the motion, agreeable to that amendment?
Accept the amendment.
Yep, accept the amendment.
Any other suggested changes or revisions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Our May 28 minutes are adopted as revised, and we are now able to proceed to the public hearing scheduled for this evening. As we begin this process, for anyone unfamiliar with our public hearing process, as each application is announced by a member of the staff, we ask that the applicant or their representative come to the podium in the center of the room, provide your name and address for the record, and then a brief summary of the application involved. Following any questions from the commission members of the applicant, we will ask members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to do so, providing their name and address, and then their comments. And we will also extend an invitation to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application to provide their comments in opposition. We ask that those speaking for or against any particular application contain their comments to three minutes in the interest of time. And where there are comments made in opposition, we will afford the applicant an opportunity to respond to the comments made in opposition. With that as backdrop, we are ready for our first public hearing.
We're gonna start with old business. So the first item tonight is a site plan review that's a companion piece for the special use permit. This is SR-23-04 and SP-23-15. This is for 1117 West Fat Street and 1141 West Fat Street. Owner applicant Ryan Benz. This is in the MX3 Zone District. So to the board, just to tee this up a little, slight change in sort of the project overall, which Ryan will introduce, so we can then formalize that correctly and legally, and potentially a future resolution. So I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Deschaux. Folks, good evening. My name is Ryan Benz, managing partner of Redev CNY. This particular project for this evening, as Mr. Deschaux described, it's essentially the exact same project, still 38 units, everything is the exact same scene. What has changed is our financing strategy. The original proposal was to include 38 units with nine being set aside for an affordability component. At the time, we were going to be partnering with a not-for-profit spring brook out of Oneonta at the time, for a multitude of reasons, primarily the fact that the pro forma didn't pencil out with the increased cost of construction and interest costs and everything else. So what we decided made best sense for that project is if we adjust the financing strategy away from the rentals and go to a condo. And there was a brand-new program that was initiated last year through New York State HCR, Homes and Community Renewal. And what I love about this program is that it's called the Affordable Housing Opportunity Program. And what it is, what is intended to do is to create first-time homebuyer opportunities for folks that are still in affordable component between 80% and 100% of AMI. So it averages at 80%, but you're allowed to go up to 100%, depending upon how it all works out. This particular program will work with condos, it will work with townhouses and/or single-family homes. So it's, again, it's intended to get those folks that make between $65,000 and about $75,000 per year opportunities to buy into the market. Now, of course, it costs substantially more to do the renovations, and this program offers a subsidy that allows this particular project to advance. Very proud to say this is our second program, second project utilizing this financing program. The first, we're about to close with HCR in July, is the renovation of St. Matthews Elementary in East Syracuse. We're doing 21 condos there, and then this program will be 38. From a site plan perspective, everything is the same, though. Literally, this is just an administrative of how we're financing it. And then from a condo perspective, these will be owner-occupied, so we'll be the developer. We will start the homeowners association generally until 50% of the units are sold, at which point then the residents actually become the HOA owners, and they're the ones that manage the building from a long-term basis. What's also incredible about this program, and other developers don't steal my financing strategies here, but it's an incredible way to break the-
Tell them.
Yeah, please. As we're being broadcast. What's incredible about this, though, is that the subsidies for the units stick to the units, so there's an affordability hold factor for 10 years. So it's affordable for 10 years, in that if somebody wants to sell the unit during that 10-year hold pattern time, they have to sell to somebody income-eligible. After that period, what is, what I love about it, though, is that they're allowed to sell on the open market. And so if it costs, as an example, about $400,000 for us to build each one of these units, and after the subsidy, the person's gonna buy the unit for about $160,000. But after year 10, they can sell it and realize that difference, which breaks the cycle of generational poverty, creates generational wealth, and a lot of other positive attributes, all while revitalizing, really, it's two buildings on one parcel, you know, which generally would be historic with these old, you know, dilapidated buildings. So it's really a home run. It's a brand-new program through HCR. Like I said, very proud that we're ushering it here in such a New York. It's us and Home Headquarters are also the two agencies locally that are working on this. And tonight, we're requesting the change in the language away from the fact that it's at 38 with nine affordable to 100% affordable at 80% of AMI, 38 units, no changes to the parking and all that kind of stuff, it's all the exact same.
So no discernible change on the ground, really? It sounds like, is that accurate?
Yeah, 100%, 100%.
And is this, this is the first instance of this program being used in the city of Syracuse, second in the region?
Yeah, well, I don't, the answer is yes to the city of Syracuse, but I'm not sure where Home Headquarters is within their application. So like I said, the two of us, I know, have worked with HCR through the process. I also know who's further and what exactly their project looks like.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
The question on the certification of the AMI, that will be done through the Neighborhood and Business Development Department, as it is with rental units, or how's that process gonna work?
Well, I know it's administered by HCR specifically on that side. I'm not sure locally, but of course, we would work with your agency and/or NBD as appropriate to-
Right.
Yeah, but I'll say that we can't sell it to them unless they're already income-eligible at the 80% of AMI.
Right, right. But somebody will be certifying that, not-
Yeah, right, New York State HCR would be responsible.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. Okay, we have no additional speakers, it appears. Anything from a staff perspective, by way of additional information that would be important for the commission to know?
Yeah, we actually brought this before you because there had to be a couple modifications to the resolution, and we assumed your vote wouldn't change if it was condos rather than rental, rentals, but we wanted to give the commission an opportunity to chew on that if they wanted to. But there's a proposed resolution in the packet. We're not voting on it, we're just showing you the change. Mr. Benz was explaining the change, but we did have to change the resolution and a reference in the major site plan review, so, but it doesn't change the nature of the SUP, so we're belt and suspenders tonight.
I'd also add, just to Commissioner Lentz's comment, just to clarify that as written right now, rezone ordinance does not regulate privately-owned condos, but it's something from our working session that I think we can discuss moving forward in any future, near-future changes to come with any amendments. So it's something we can take a look at, if it's something that developers are gonna take advantage of, but right now, it's applicable to tenants, which means renters from a landlord.
So we're, we don't need to take any action on the major site plan review, but we will need to take action on the special use permit for the parking lot? Is that the companion application?
No, this, this special use permit is still across the street from a residential, multifamily residential building. I don't think that we need to modify the SUP because there's gonna be a change in the way they occupy the building.
Yeah, the SUP established the parking, so that doesn't change here.
Okay.
Ideally, I'll be honest, administratively, you know, it would have been ideal to change this, but there's no way to do that on a resolution except for coming back before this governing body, so that's what we're doing here.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess we could do a straw poll. I think the chair already did that, that everyone's okay with these changes, that it doesn't affect the way you voted previously, don't need to have a new public hearing. Okay, good.
Do we need anything more than that, or simply reflect that in the minutes?
No, really, yeah, this is really more informational, just to keep your breath, because we had to change the resolution. The resolution's a legal document, it's already signed, and we had to modify the language in it, so we need to produce a new one.
And it's for both the site plan and special use. So we're just, it references condos or apartments, so that'll be changed to condos in both documents.
Okay, sounds good. We can proceed to our next hearing.
Also, staying under old business, a re-subdivision R-24-29, this is for 170 and 202 Lafayette Road. The commission also previously heard this. We could not take an action last time around because the Onondaga County Planning Board had yet to review this. They have since done so. On May 29, they finished their full review of the project, no opposition, and we did perform Seeker already, just as a heads-up here. And I'll turn it over to the applicant, Ed Keplinger.
Yeah, Ed Keplinger, Keplinger Freeman Associates, 6320 Fly Road, East Syracuse. I don't have anything to add unless there's some comments from the county that need to be addressed.
The county had no conditions, and I think indicated that this body may act on it, and they had no recommendations.
Okay.
And nothing has changed from your perspective-
Nothing has changed. I think we're all set to go.
... considering before. We've completed Seeker on this. We were unable to proceed further that night, awaiting the planning board's action. That action's been completed. So our public comment had closed at the last meeting, so, okay, thank you.
We're all set.
We are all set. So we now have the re-subdivision R 2429 as just outlined by staff and the applicant, and partial action last time on Seeker, and we are at liberty now to take action on the re-subdivision itself. Is there a motion for that action?
Move to approve the subdivision R 2429.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one additional old-business item?
Yes, another re-subdivision R-24-17 at 323, 321-23, 327, 329-31, 335, and 343, Cortland Ave. This is a re-subdivision combining six lots into one. This is also a project that the commission already reviewed. Due to the project involving a zoning map amendment, the Planning Commission was not able to approve the re-subdivision until the council's approval of the zoning map change. That did happen on June 3. The Common Council did approve that zoning map amendment, so now the re-subdivision is back before this body. Applicant is Ben Harrell with CHA Consulting.
Okay, and is there any substantive change in this application since it was last considered by this body?
Nothing from the staff's end to report.
Okay. Questions from any of the commission members?
We did Seeker when we did the original re-subdivision hearing, okay, thanks.
So we may now proceed with action on this re-subdivision, which is R 2417. Is there a motion for action on this?
Move approval of application R 2717 as presented with no additional conditions.
Second.
Discussion on the re-subdivision motion. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? R 2417 on Cortland Ave is approved. Completes our old business, correct?
That's correct.
Then we can move on to the new items.
First item of new business tonight is a special use permit, SP-24-12, located at 1401-07 Burnett Ave. Owner is Ron Schultz. This is in the MX2 Zone District.
Good evening.
Hello, this is to expand the customer area to the second floor.
Sorry to interject, sir. Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Ron Schultz, 1401 Burnett Ave, Syracuse 13206. And this is to expand the customer area to the second floor. This had gone in front of Planning Commission last year and approved, but I guess because of the SACPA and change, I guess with the new, they found some discrepancies in the address, and they wanted to get officially, everything official. So it was recommended that we apply again.
So similar to some other projects, you know, during review, the owner's been very cooperative with us, and, you know, it would behoove him and any future owner to kind of set the record straight with, you know, how that's established legally. So it's kind of getting everything back on paper in front of the commission in the right format, legally, kind of covering everything. So everything is established in the proper manner.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just a couple of questions, because I wasn't on the commission when the first presentation came through. So the second floor is gonna be seating for restaurant and special events. Is there gonna be restaurant, kitchen activity on the second floor?
No kitchen on the second floor.
And so you'd be moving stuff up and down with a dumb waiter?
There's stairs, there's two stairs, yeah.
And just curious, so the main building of Shifty's, is that actually attached to the building that you're using for freezer storage space? Have they been-
Yes, and I think that was one of the issues with the application last year, because the address, somewhere along the line, the two buildings were connected years and years ago, so it's now considered 1401-07, and I think that it was put in last year officially approved as 1405, so that was one of the issues. But that the customers do not have access to that second building, it's just an office and a cooler.
Further questions for the applicant? Commission? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Please provide your name, address, and then your comments.
My name is Jeanne Kuker. I'm at 1420 Burnett Ave. My biggest concern if we decide to go forward with this is that there's no parking right now. People are parking on both sides of the road, and they're not supposed to be. We've had issues with emergency vehicles not being able to get through, and I just see that's a bigger problem. Plus, they park in front of my driveway all the time as well.
Okay, that kind of sounds a little bit like a comment in opposition, but maybe not?
It's dangerous. It truly is.
Okay.
I just, I would like you to consider that, that's all, because of the other areas. I mean, Dominix right now is not open. What happens when they open up? Where are they gonna park? That's my biggest issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other individuals who might wish to speak, either in favor of or in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
I just have a staff comment based on that. So the land use establishment for the structure recognized legal operation prior to 1957, when the city officially adopted parking regulations, and any previously zoning administrations have allowed the continuation of the no-mark, parking minimums, and since business has continued, they haven't been closed for longer than a year. That legal non-conforming regulation or no parking requirement continues today.
Grandfathered, essentially. Okay. Certainly.
Last summer, when this came up, I took Google Map pictures and brought them to the meeting last year that nobody came out to. But there was, it's odd even, so I don't know where I got, someone told me, look, 400 feet in each direction from your establishment. So we're on the corner of Burnett and Greenway, and any given night, 400 feet in the four directions, on odd or even, there is 45 to 55 parking spaces. Now, our capacity is 74, I think, so even if every single person that came there drove their own vehicle, which is, I think, rare, there's enough parking there, and this overflow for upstairs, it wouldn't be open every day. It's for special events, and maybe on a night or two that we think it is going to be busy, we could use it as, you know, extra space, but, and it's, you know, private parties usually last two to three hours, so it's not considered, you know, not all day and all night that the parking would be needed.
And you see the primary attraction of that space being for what sorts of events, would you imagine?
Yeah, private parties, Christmas parties, things like that, that we're just too small to, we get approached a lot to do things like that, and we just can't shut down to have that, we're just, it's a small bar area. But if we were to renovate the upstairs, it would be a good space for smaller parties.
Okay.
I guess I have a question. As far as the private parties, do you have like a timeframe on when they would like, how you guys would allot the space? Like, what are the timeframes?
Nothing set up currently, but, I mean, just considered how, when we're, people approach us about it, it's usually holiday time, and it's usually weekends and evenings. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah? Is there a way, neighbor to neighbor, to accommodate the concern of parking in a private driveway or blocking the driveway?
If, you mean if someone was being blocked, could there, we open up a line of communication to-
Well, your neighbor justified that her driveway is often blocked, presumably, maybe not, but presumably by somebody at Shifty's. And if there was a way for her to call or for somebody to address it, to say, if you're- or for somebody to address it, to say, "If your car's there, it's going to be towed."
Typically, and we have security on the door every evening if they were approached. And then there is live music four or five nights a week, so that person could easily go to the stage and have someone make an announcement, "Hey, your car is going to be towed if it's blocking." We would run into that problem a lot when Dominix was open, and their staff would come over and say, "We could have it towed, but we're letting you know." So yes, we have staff available if someone was to come in and say, "Our driveway's blocked."
You could all exchange contact info or something as a way of making sure we could see how it works. And if they even are your customers, it may not be, to your point. It might be someone else. So, thanks.
I'd be open to that, yes.
Thanks.
We had no additional speakers, so we'll close public comment on this application. And we may now proceed to our seeker review for the special use permit.
Has anybody had a chance to review the short EAF Part 1 that's contained in your packet?
Yes.
Yes.
Is everyone familiar with the 11 questions of the short EAF Part 2, which the commission fills out?
Yes.
Do you believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts?
No.
All right. Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under seeker and complete the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion then for action under the seeker review?
I remove, move approval of seeker with a positive declaration, a negative declaration. Sorry. We'll get it right.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the seeker motion before us. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker review for the special use permit is approved. We may now proceed to action on the permit itself. So this is SP-24-12 at 1400 Block of Burnett Avenue.
Move to approve with the, what would we call it? With, like, with asking of the client to... I'm having a brain fart, sorry. To keep an open line of communication with all neighbors in regards to the parking in front of any driveways. A special condition, sorry. I remember now what I was trying to say. Pardon me. But yeah, special condition that you guys keep an open line of communication with all neighbors. Thank you.
I second the motion. This is a special use permit, so in light of our earlier discussion during approval of the minutes from the last meeting, could the motion also state that we are making a positive declaration of action for referral to the common council?
Any further discussion on this motion? If not, then all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? SP-2412 is approved, and we move on to our next application, please.
Still under new business. This is a major site plan review, MASPR-24-21, located at 3020 James Street. Owner is Steve Skinner. This is in the MX2 Zone District. This is a proposal to convert the former American Legion building into a 29-unit apartment building. Site improvements would include sidewalk replacement, pavement reduction, new designation of 28 parking spaces, miscellaneous landscaping, new dumpster, and bicycle parking.
Stephen Skinner, 2226 James Street, Syracuse 13206 is where I reside.
Katrina Skinner, 2226 James Street.
Same city.
Steve, anything else just to introduce the project a little bit more?
Yeah, okay. So this project's been here before, and I know some changes, again, from zoning. And I think, again, we've had a few people who were consultants sadly pass away on this project. So we've had some setbacks and delays, and we're obviously getting pretty close to financing, but we would love to get this project moving along. It's the original Taft School, which was on James and Nichols. I guess some people, first school building of the Eastwood community. Our family has been very big when it comes to preserving history. We own the Palace Theater and other wonderful Eastwood properties, and we live there and work there and church there and everything else. But this building means a lot to us in the sense that it's probably the most prominent tall building, and you can see what it was originally from the original school building then being built on, starting from the early 1900s all the way throughout. The American Legion has had the building, which you'll see some lettering on the front still there, which we were able to secure the former Friendly's that's in the town of DeWitt, renovate that, and they moved out last summer. So we've owned this building since last summer and are eager to eventually get started on it. But due to these, you know, very tragic setbacks, we're now moving forward finally. But it is originally 29 units, which I know currently it's actually 28 units because AT&amp;T does have a cell phone tower on one of the corners that takes up what would be a classroom. So that is there. It has no, you know, it's totally separate. It has nothing bearing on the rest of the building. But it's 28 units is what is remaining. I would love to, if that lease expires, to have that be a unit as well. But that would be a two-bedroom unit. That is not there, but 28 units and all apartments, not doing any, you know, business on the first floor. It doesn't lend itself, has a nice parking lot in the back, but, but anyway, it's going to be a beautiful building, and we're going to abide by, you know, all the latest rules, and yeah, it shows most of it right on the plans there, so.
So the AT&amp;T equipment is in one of the units, not up on top?
So it's on, it's on the roof, but you know how you have like components?
Oh.
And I got to go, finally go in there, and it's really sad. It takes up a whole room, and it's literally like a couple radio pieces of equipment, probably, you know, and, you know, old or whatever it is. But nonetheless, that is the agreement, and I would love to, I'd love to not have it there, but it's there, and that was part of the deal of taking the building, understanding that. And we weren't going to let that, you know, stop us from doing a great project. But the building has been in disrepair for many years, continuing. So, you know, it's, we've tried to keep it together.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Could you describe the unit types? I can't really tell from all the drawings. It looks like most of them are two-bedroom.
Yeah. So, and again, the building, we would love to have everything be exactly what it was, you know, 100 years ago. But the American Legion did that addition in the center of the courtyard in the front, which... So if I'm straight, there's eight one-bedroom apartments, I believe, eight one-bedroom apartments. And then I think it's going to be 20 two-bedroom. It would have had 21, but due to that. And there happens to be on that, you see right there in the middle of that, would have been the courtyard, there are three very large two-bedroom apartments. So that's on the first floor only. The second floor, there's still two, the second floor will actually have some of those be one-bedroom. But, but, yep, and then I call the towers. The towers all will have two bedrooms on the towers, two different sets of two bedrooms on both floors. And then the original school building in the back, some of those are one, and I think some of those are two. But in the end, I think it's eight one-bedroom, 20 two-bedroom, a few of them being very large two-bedrooms. And I know the one side says luxury apartments. They're going to be beautiful. They're going to be... Everything we do is really lovely, and they're going to be all brand-new. But, but obviously, we will abide by all rules. I think I was told at least three have to be what considered affordable, and we will abide by all of that. Right now, we have discussed all different options of having more affordable apartments there, and I know we're still waiting for some answers on that, but it's, again, the apartments, it's not like they're, we're going to be charging some outrageous amount for them either. It's more the paperwork to do it all. We really don't want to, unless there's some real good incentive to do it. We're just more for getting this project done and getting it rented. No problem.
No questions. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Just touching on the, you mentioned the affordable aspect of it. I'm seeing here there's a recommendation just asking that at least 10% of it be affordable?
So we're honoring all that.
So with the three.
So three. We're going to do three. It's a little bit more, but you can't do two. It's under.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that. You said it, but I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, sure. And, and, yeah, there's, if there was greater incentives to do more, we would look into it. It's just, again, more you do of that, then more paperwork comes, and we're, you know, our team is only so large. And we do have a ramp on, so we will also honor all ADA requirements as well. There's no elevator in this building, but it will have sprinkler system, full fire, carbon, hard... Everything will be up to state and local code. And we have an engineer on it. Obviously, there's, the MEP's already been in, and contractors are prepped and ready.
Okay. As far as the affordable units, are you, what are you plan, how are you planning to make those, like, out of the 28, how many will be, like, how many two-bedrooms?
We're going to do the minimum right now. It's three.
No, no, no. I understand three. I'm saying, like, what number of bedrooms?
Oh, so the, do we...
Will be an option for the affordable?
So they're going to probably be the one-bedroom units. There's three. There are only one and two bedrooms there. So it's probably, it's either going to be a one or a two-bedroom.
We're still waiting on numbers of what the costs are for the two different levels.
Yeah. It's only one or two bedrooms. So, and I don't think there's a, I don't think it has to be on a certain floor, but because, again, it's all going to be lovely, but obviously, you know, there's, in a school building, stairs are a little bit hefty to get up.
So, sorry. I asked that question for a reason. I think staff is going to be able to...
So just to clarify, that is the minimum requirement. 10% of the dwelling units have to be deemed certified affordable. So the applicant is correct that the number of that is three. But the remaining conditions on top of that are that all the affordable units have to have the same structural fixtures, appliances, and materials as the market rate. But on top of that, the affordable units must be evenly distributed among the different types, meaning number of bedrooms. So MBD and Deputy Commissioner Mike Collins and the MBD team are aware of the project, and the staff is reviewing and working on the final pending approval and certification of that, so that's something that we can work with the applicant on to make sure that we're evenly distributing those different types of units. Since they're only one and two bedrooms, one of them will be one, and the other two will have to be the other.
And it's 100%.
Pretty simple on that one.
Whatever they decide is fine with us. We're, and they're, just so you know, too, they will all be equally... We do not change quality. It's actually, it's a beautiful facility. Everything is upper-end. So everything will be identically the same.
I have one additional question, and it pertains to the short environmental form that you completed dealing with stormwater discharge. So it indicated that the project would create stormwater discharge. Can you review how that's being dealt with? Because it says it wouldn't be discharged to adjacent properties, which seems appropriate, but how are you dealing with the stormwater discharge? Or was, or was that...
Yeah, I guess, can you re-ask the question? Because there shouldn't be more stormwater, because we're not changing the footprint of the building itself. I know that we are changing, if you go back to the picture, there's, there's a lot of work that's being redone in the parking lot. The entire parking lot's redone. So there's trees being added. There's more grass being added to the space. So...
So that, that was my thinking, because you're removing the impervious pavement, and I was wondering if maybe just the wrong box got checked.
Yeah, there's, there's more. It's possible. I can take a look at that with our...
Yeah. It says, "Will it create stormwater discharge?" The box is checked yes. But then it says, "If yes, will the storm discharge to adjacent properties?" That box is no. And then the second option underneath that is, "Will stormwater be directed to established conveyance systems runoff in storm drains?" And that's checked no. And I did remember reading that you were removing some of the impervious pavement on site. So that seems like that would be a reduction in...
I believe so. And our landscape architect is not with us tonight, but I believe that was one of the things she was addressing.
Yeah, everyone I'm sure knows Terry Horst, and Terry's the one in charge of it. So she's, she does a great job, and it might have been a missed box checked. But like you can see on the center of the plans, it's going to be, again, we're keeping everything very clean and simple. We're not trying to overcomplicate matters, but there'll be trees. There'll be obviously greenery. And then obviously, we're doing a center median, both for beautification, for water discharge, for also just to help break up the flow of having a lot of tar via. So I'm sure water, maybe it was just mischecked, but that's, that's what it's going to look like right there in the back. And it will be all repaved properly, done cleanly, curbed out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
I have one last question.
Yeah.
Regarding the affordable units, what is the timeframe for the status of those? Like...
Same as everything else, I believe. Whatever the MBD tells us we need to do.
Just make sure that's US plans, because what I see here is that they shouldn't be able to expire as far as like it being affordable.
Correct. We'll be doing everything concurrently, and whatever they, whatever instructions are as far as when they're available.
Yeah, it's a part of the condition.
Yes, correct.
Okay. It's part of the conditions, absolutely. We'll agree with whatever they sign.
I have a quick, couple of quick questions. The, we're reducing the parking lot to 28 spaces. Did I read it right?
It may, well, I know we want to have at least one per every unit. I thought at one time, I thought we had 28 or 29 at one time, because we obviously have dumpster enclosures and things like that. But, but maybe...
And currently, is it more than 29? Right now, today, if I went there, I think it is, actually.
I believe so, because we're adding the trees, so we're taking out some because of the trees.
It's also extremely, I mean, it's extremely congested. It's, it's a mess. I mean, it's a mess right now. It's, if you go back there, it's an a pothole, and the goal is to bring some beautification to the environment, including seating and green space and, yes, sidewalks. So we said we want to do everything appropriately. Our goal was to give everyone at least one parking space. That's the goal. But, but, yeah, we got to clean it up.
And then the basement of that building has a bowling alley?
So no bowling alley. It had a lounge bar, had a bar which has been dismantled. They took the bar. And we even took their shuffleboard and converted it into a new bar. So you can go stop down and, we used to get ice cream. Now you can get a drink for cheap. But down at Friendly's, former Friendly's, but, but no, it was a lounge, so not a bowling alley. They may have had like games, you know, little games, like shuffleboard games, and they had a bowling game. Yes, where you sling the, whatever, something, hit the pins down.
The alley they've been called a shuffle alley.
Shuffle, okay, there you go. Sorry. All right. I, my mother didn't let me go to those plays. Anyway. But it's low ceilings. We are planning in-house a form of rental lockers for people to have a storage of bicycles. There is a separate entrance out, but at this time or whatever, we are not planning to do any, it just is not conducive for the building to do any form of business parking. We're trying to prevent the parking issue in the community. So it is, it is going to be utilized, but not for, and it's only like a, it doesn't have a full height. It's like six, eight feet high, eight feet high maybe. So.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you both.
Well, good.
Very much.
Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. We apparently have no additional speakers. We will close public comment on this application. I turn to staff and legal counsel to see if there's any additional pertinent information of which the commission should be made aware as we proceed.
Before seeker, just want to reply to your question around water runoff. The landscape architect has committed to addressing the conditional approvals from both sanitation, sewers, and city engineering, noting that these items will be addressed in the construction site plan application process, which they will be. I can confirm our staff does look at drainage plans. And even if a SWIP is not required for the disturbance of 10,000... And even if a SWIP is not required for the disturbance of 10,000 square feet of soil or more, the applicant still needs to show and document that all drainage will appropriately be diverted to the stormwater, you know, system in place and the facility that's in place, so that it doesn't sheet into the right of way or adjacent properties. So that's something that our team will look at.
Excellent, thank you. With that clarification, we may now proceed to our seeker review for the application.
Has everyone had a chance to review the short EF, part one, that's in your packet?
Yes.
Yes.
You're familiar with the 11 questions of the short EF, part two, does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impact?
No.
No.
All right, because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under seeker and complete the EF, part three accordingly.
Is there a motion for that seeker action?
I move a negative seeker declaration.
Yeah, you should see.
Sorry, continue.
Second. Yes, you were saying.
Yes.
I move a finding of a negative seeker declaration for this project.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on the seeker motion. If there's no discussion on that motion, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved for this project, and we may now proceed to act upon the major site plan review for MAS PR 2421 on James Street.
With approval of the application as presented, with the recommended conditions standard related to 10% affordability criteria.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion before us?
Just a question for staff, is there anything we need to add to our motion?
Does it have to be specifically written, as written?
Right.
I mean, no, we can reference the staff report by reference in the resolution, you can read them if you'd like.
So as written, they're detailed how we would recommend, but you can either reference them, or we can read them in.
I mean, the ones that are printed, we can, we can read them, but generally, we just reference the ones that are in, rather than taking time to read them.
Correct.
As presented in the application. The staff analysis, I'm sorry.
And my second just echoes the comments that we proceed as we've discussed on the record.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The site plan review is approved for MAS PR dash 24 dash 21. Thank you both very much. We move to another application.
Also, another major site plan review, MAS PR dash 24 dash 27, this is for 1105 dash 17 South State Street. The applicant is McCormick Baron &amp; Salzar, this is in the MX2 Zone District, owner is Syracuse Housing Authority.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Very good.
My name is Ray Ryback, I'm representing McCormick Baron, and I'm at One Grand Army Plaza, Brooklyn, New York.
And she's part of the presentation team?
Yes.
Andrew Schuster, Asher McGraw Architects, 125 East Jefferson Street, Syracuse, New York.
Thank you. Can you give us a little synopsis of what's involved here?
Sure. We're redeveloping a new site. This is actually a second project of a multi-project, multi-phased project throughout Syracuse in the 15th Ward. This will be one building located on an, just over one acre site, across the street from Almus Over, Oliver Tower. It's a four-story building, 126 units, affordable housing that'll be split in between seniors and residents for the YWCA. The existing parcel right now is a vacant parking lot, the project is actually part of the brownfield cleanup program. Here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I understand the, the wing for senior residents, I'm just kind of curious, the wing for residents of the YWCA, there are, they have residents right now, or they are going to be opening up a resident service with this facility? How's that, how does that work?
So currently, there are residents that the YWCA houses in AOT tower across the street, and we will be taking them from that tower and moving them into this facility.
I see, okay. So that, there'll be like the same number, the same units, it's just movement?
Yes.
The facility when it's finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any differences in the units?
No, they'll all be finished the same. Between the two, two uses, if you will. Yeah, no, they'll be the same.
You missed it, what's the bedroom bathroom like layout, what's the number per like unit?
We can take a look at the, right there. It's a mix of one and two bedroom units.
I don't have any other questions.
And these are, yeah, these are typical layouts, or these are mostly one bedrooms that you're seeing here. I think there's a two-bedroom in the corner unit, and then the, the unit types will pretty much be the same as you, as you turn the corner. And the two uses, if you will, are separated, so the YWCA portion and the senior section don't co-mingle, if you will, so, if you could move this plan back, what you'll see is more stairs than, than we actually need, but it's because the building's actually separated by a firewall that also keeps separation of tendencies.
Got you, okay.
Further questions for the applicant?
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No one is rising to speak in either direction, so we will close public comment on this, and now proceed to our seeker review.
No, so we've already done seeker with this. Seeker was performed with the CPC as lead agency. We did a type one coordinated review for phase one and phase two of the project, which encompasses this, so.
All right, thank you. So, with that clarification, we may now proceed to direct action on the site plan review for MAS PR 2427 on South State Street. Is there a motion for action?
I move approval of MAS PR 2427 as presented, with the 15 conditions stipulated in the staff report on page 122 of the packet.
Thank you. Thank you both. Discussion on that motion. There's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Site plan review for MAS PR 2427 is approved, thank you both very much. Onward to more site plan reviews.
Yes, another major site plan review is up next, MAS PR dash 24 dash 22, located at 1510 West Fat Street, owner 601 Avery LLC, the applicant is also Ed Keplinger.
Good evening again, Ed Keplinger, Keplinger Freeman Associates, 6320 Fly Road, East Syracuse. With me tonight is?
Good evening, I'm Mark Dean, Principal Dean Architects, my office is at 8353 Main Street in Clarence, New York.
We're here, also with us are the developers, Brad O'Connor and Sean Corcoran. What's being proposed here is a new storage facility, this facility is intended to serve the Tip Hill neighborhood storage needs and also the adjoining businesses. What's being, the building will be a two, three-story, 42, 44,720 square foot building, the street side, Fayette Street side, the building will have two stories of exposure, and on the north side, which is the upper part of this sheet, the building will have three stories of exposure. Mark will go through that in a minute when we go through elevations. Let's see, so we have two entry points to this site on East Fayette, there's one on the east side, one on the west side. We have driveways that go all the way around the building. On the Fayetteville side of the building, we have six parking spaces, there'll also be 17 roll-up doors. On the north side of the building, there'll be 21 roll-up doors and a drive-in loading dock, which, loading area. A couple of things to note, and back to that plan, we have a pervious paving going in on three sides of the building, on the west, east and north sides. We also have fencing that will only be along the east, west and north property lines, and will be essentially, you can go onto the site without having to go through fencing or gates or whatnot, so it, there will be minimal visual obstructions along the Fayetteville Street frontage. We also, if you scroll down to the planting plan, oh, right here, so you, we have, this one here, yeah, with the planting, so we have a lot of planting going in, as you can see along the frontage, monument sign along the street. Let's see, what else is on, I think that's the highlights, and I can turn it over to Mark for, go through the architecture.
So just a quick review, we're 44,000 roughly square feet, 135 gross square feet on three floors, which gives us around 950,000 net square feet of rentable area, equates to about 900 to 950 self-storage units. The facility is going to be 100% secure, as Ed mentioned, there's a fence around three sides of the property with gated access in the front. You have to have, you have to be a tenant or a client there in order to access the property from, from effectively any direction. There's a small office in the front, around 700 square feet, there's two elevators towards the back loading area. Again, so the rear of the building is accessed on the first floor, the front of the building is accessed on the second floor, because there's about a 10 or 12-foot pitch and grade from front to back. So if we want to take a quick look at the renderings, just, just the first one is fine. So you, you'll see the building presents itself at the street as a two-story building, has a nice feature of metal panel siding, in combination with stone and, and an ACM around the front to give it a little bit more curb appeal, and that's sort of mimicked in the, in the sign out at the street as well. Those front doors you see, those are individual units that are accessed from the exterior. There are on this side of the building, and then there are also additional ones at the rear of the building.
I'm on Fayette Street.
Yes, right.
I just wanted to be sure.
And, right at the end, if you scan, right at the, on the right-hand side, that's also an additional loading area that you can get to the main portion of the building from the front. With that, I'll answer any questions.
I have a question regarding the fence, what type of fence will it be?
We're looking at? We're looking at the ornamental steel fence, so it'd be very close to what's in the rendering here.
Okay. And then, do you guys plan to have any bike parking spaces?
Yes, we are, it is a condition of approval.
All right, just making sure.
Okay.
Further questions for the applicant?
I had a question about parking, so there's, six parking spaces are listed, but for the units on the first floor that you're accessing from outside, and all of those units cars can pull up in front of that unit, or not?
That's correct, right, right in front of the door, there's, there's a place for to pull your vehicle up to load and unload for those, and then in the, at the rear of the building, each one of those overhead doors, there's also room for a vehicle in front of those doors, as well as a few vehicles at the loading area specifically.
There's plenty of room at the loading areas?
More than enough room, yeah.
For cars to pull up and unload as they go up to the upper floors.
With sites like these, you, you rarely see more than three or four people at the property at any given time.
Right, right. Are you going to be selling materials like U-Haul does for their rental units inside?
So there's a small office in front, again, around, it's around 700 square feet, where they can put display up for some of that merchandise, yes, it's just inside.
Right. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, so, in the illustrations with, with your, your plan, right now you're using the local name, Tip Hill, but is that, is that the plan, or is there perhaps another branding that might go on the building that will be disclosed later?
I don't think that they're 100%, that, that they're 100% on that answer, I mean, currently, we've been using Tip Hill, a lot of these facilities do go to a third-party manager, extra space, public, in which case they like to brand the facility.
Right, and at this point, there's no signage request with the plan?
No, not at this time, but a, a sign permit would need to be applied for, that's something that we would review, and it would be issued under a billing permit.
This would be a conversation about that, if there was a specific naming and branding and requirement for certain number of directional, as well as building signs.
Correct.
And again, just, this is just a discussion for the record, but we appreciate the fact that you've tried to be sensitive to the design elements of the area that you're putting this business into, so thank you for doing that.
Right, exactly, thank you. It's not inconceivable that people will want to ride bikes there once they have stuff stored there.
Bikes are a tough one if you're trying to store something, but it's not inconceivable.
Further questions for the applicants?
All set, thank you.
Come on, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, comments.
I'd like to address the board if I may, my name is John Paul Carlisle, I'm the owner of Nipsey's Pub, of course, you can't see it on the map, but it's the closest building to this structure, and I can't remember exactly when it was, it might have been a year and a half, two years ago, we, I came and spoke before the board with regard to Sean Corcoran's previous plan. My feeling at the time is, is still my feeling, which is, let's do something, something, anything with this piece of property, let's clean it up. I think Sean's, in other projects, has gone with the intention of re-beautifying, revitalizing the neighborhood, and I don't think this is any different, I think it seems like he's got a good team behind him. One of the examples that, that I used, the last time I addressed the board, was a rogue office chair that I looked at every day, that sat in that field, and every few days it would move a few feet, some days it would move a few hundred feet, thankfully, that chair is now gone, but it would be nice to, to see some kind of revitalization in this property. The selfish upshot for me, as a business owner, directly on the, the side of this, would be the additional security and cameras, the additional foot traffic sets of eyes, we don't have a lot of problems up in that neighborhood, thankfully, but I think this would dissuade anything getting any worse in that area. We have a nice, you know, tight-knit group over on the west end, and I'd like to keep it that way, and I think this will be a big help. Not to mention the fact that my building, being the oldest bar, oldest continuous bar in the city, some say the county, the building's 134 years ago, we're very small, the basements are very small, I cannot stand up fully in my basement, so I would appreciate.
You're a prospective customer.
Yes, I would appreciate some storage, especially if it's convenient.
I'd like to walk across the street.
Well, if I had an office chair, I could put my things on it and wheel them across the street.
Move over.
So, as, as a local business owner, and, and I didn't, I didn't know the, the project too well the first time I stepped up to the board, but I have kind of taken it upon myself to learn a little bit more about it, and I'm still all in favor, so, as a, as a bordering business owner, I'd like to throw my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other individuals who may wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. We have no additional speakers for this application, we will close the public comment, and we can proceed to our. We will close the public comment, and we can proceed to our environmental, uh, review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the short EAF Part One that's contained in your packet?
Yes.
Knowing that you're familiar with the eleven questions of the short EAF Part Two, does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts?
No.
No.
Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under Seeker and complete the EAF Part Three accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion?
Move, uh, make a negative Seeker declaration?
Thank you. Discussion on the Seeker motion? All in favor of the Seeker motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion is approved for MASP R twenty-four twenty-two, and we may now proceed to act upon the site plan review itself. Is there a motion for action?
And before we have the motion, we just want to see if staff has a comment for it.
I do. No worries. No, um, I was just checking something, and I, um, in spite of the name, I want to make sure that you clarify in your motion that this is a mini-storage facility. Um, we've designated a difference between self-storage and mini-storage because we had an applicant come in who was not doing a fenced compound as per the definition of mini-storage. This facility is a mini-storage facility under the code, so I'd like you to make sure that you clarify that. There's certain aspects of it that are required to meet the definition, which they presently need.
Clarification, is there any disagreement from commission members of, uh, that understanding of the project?
No disagreement.
We will, um, refer to it in that context then. And then we may now, I think, proceed to the, uh, to action on the site plan review itself. Is there a motion to, for the site plan review?
So we've moved on the record to, uh, accepting comments that are both in our, um, our staff notes and, and noting what's on the record tonight, that we moved to approve the, um, this major site plan review for a mini-storage facility.
Second.
Correct. Thank you both. Discussion on the motion now before us. If there's no discussion, then all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That site plan review is approved for the project on West Fayette Street. I neglected to mention earlier.
I saw that. I was, I was just going to bring up the next, those two items.
Please, uh, my oversight.
So, um, apologies to anybody, um, attending tonight, but we have two items that are postponed. Hopefully, uh, none of you are here for them, but the, the first would have been the next item, which is a ma- major site plan review for, uh, one thousand one East Brighton Ave. Uh, similar to what we just discussed, this is a, a proposal for interior self-storage, which is a newer, unlisted use that we created not too long ago. Um, that use is allowed with a special use permit, so the applicant, um, has to come back before this board, uh, with that companion piece. So once that's submitted and reviewed by staff, we'll bring both of those, uh, applications forward to the planning commission. So I do apologize for not mentioning that at the start of the meeting. Um, also on page three of the, uh, staff, uh, packets, um, the three projects listed under the title Q's Cars Expansion, that is also postponed for the time being. The applicant is working on some amendments and site plan updates and revisions that they would like to change prior to coming, um, to this board. So those items are postponed for now as well.
And Jake, when those return to us, whenever that happens to be, there'll be a public notice about that, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so people can watch for that.
So that does bring us, uh, to our next, uh, project. Uh, it, it is a two-project, um, presentation. So the first is a major site plan review, uh, along with a re-subdivision. This is for twelve thirteen and twelve seventeen North Salina Street. This is for the Co-op Federal Credit Union. Uh, this is also Ed Kupplinger. He's a popular man this evening.
Ed told me to take no more than ninety seconds, so I will. I'm Jim Hartman. I'm with the Syracuse Cooperative Federal Credit Union. I think many of you folks know who we are. We've been very active in the community here for now forty-two years, I guess it is. We also forty-two million dollars in assets, so we're kind of proud. That's a very small financial institution, and yet we've been able to leverage that into nearly two-hundred million in loans to, uh, the city of Syracuse. So we're very active and involved with the city. Uh, of that, nearly eighty percent of that, uh, that lending volume is residential mortgages, uh, people owning homes and, uh, single and, and two-family homes. So we've been very involved with investing in the community. As you may know, we've got four branches, uh, one down here on this, at the, uh, S H A in the Pioneer Homes, another one at the Southwest Community Center, another one on Erie Boulevard that we just opened, uh, which we're quite proud of, and also one on eight-hundred North Salina Street. The one at eight-hundred North Salina would like to move to this location at twelve thirteen, twelve seventeen North Salina. Uh, it has many advantages for us, including the ability to put a drive-through in, which we don't have at the one location, and it also gives us a chance to have a drive-up, uh, ATM as well as parking. So it kind of changes the way we can, uh, we can operate, and I think it has many advantages for us. Uh, we're committed to the north side. You may have noticed that, uh, you know, you may know that many of the mortgages that is on redevelopment work on the north side have come through our credit union, and we really would like to put a, a commitment in that neighborhood that, uh, that would allow us to continue to do that. So that's really what this is all about. Uh, I think that we picked a beautiful building that our intention is to try to bring it back to much of what it originally looked like. There've been some changes made to the building that, uh, that kind of take away from what it was. You have a picture of the Zett Brewery over here. This building was originally built as a house for, uh, the Hacker family, which was the manager and owner of the, of Zett Brewery after George Zett passed away. Our intention is to try to bring it back historically, to make it look, uh, a lot like what it did before. Unfortunately, we can't bring it all the way back, but we can make some improvements. If you look at it, that front there is kind of, I refer to that as nineteen-sixties funeral home modern. And we're going to, our idea is to bring that roofline back in, and, and our, you know, architects can explain that in greater detail, but kind of make it look more like what, uh, what, uh, it should have looked like the rest of the building. So, uh, hopefully, you know, we, uh, we can do something here that'll improve that area, uh, give us the parking that we've been looking for, give us that drive-through. Our intention, by the way, is to take the drive-through and try to build a carriage drive instead of just a standard drive-through. A carriage drive that'll kind of reflect off the historical and architectural significance of the other buildings. So we really are intending to, to do this, I think do it right and show a commitment to the north side. So that's why we hired two of the best minds here in the business, and I'll let them tell you how they're going to spend our money.
That was more than ninety seconds.
Yeah.
We were ready to get the hook. He answered a couple of questions already, so it makes the whole presentation.
In conclusion now.
All right, uh, as Jake said, we're here for two actions. The first is a subdivision, and the second is site plan review. There's currently two parcels of land here, one which contains funeral home, and then one which would be to the right portion of the sheet, which contains a single-family residential structure. Uh, the structure will be demolished, demolished as part of the project. Also being demolished on the current, or on the site plan is a garage located the lower-left portion of the site right there. And then there's a rear portion of the building that will be knocked off right there, yes. So what we're proposing is, uh, parking for sixteen cars, a new drive-through canopy, atta-, um, it's almost attached to the building, um, or attached to the building, uh, very close to it. Uh, and, uh, let's see, we'll, uh, stormwater management facilities, uh, there's some, uh, retaining wall on the, both the north, west, and south portions of the site that will be reconstructed, uh, that the current retaining walls are in disrepair, or they are associated with the, um, the house that's, we're being demolished. Let's see, I think, uh, we got a new stor-, uh, let's see, a new, uh, waste enclosure going in at the lower right-hand corner of the site. I think that's, uh, the overview. It's not a big site, there's not a lot we can do with it, but we are, we are going to make it nice.
Turn it over to Jim.
Uh, Jim Nittle in Architects, two thirty-nine, uh, East Water Street. Yeah, so the, the building was built, uh, Jim, when was the date? He, he knows that better than I do. Uh, it was, it was built as a funeral home. Uh, it was quite a nice-looking building. Uh, unfortunately, in the sixties, the front porch was taken off and, uh, a totally alien addition was, was built on here, uh, as was the case for many buildings in the sixties. Um, also, uh, the rear porch was enclosed and added on to in the back, uh, just to provide more space for the funeral home folks. So our plan is to, uh, two things. One, uh, we are creating a drive-through, uh, that's compatible, complimentary to the building. It'll be brick-clad, shingled roof. Uh, and then on the front, we're, we're taking some action to kind of cut back some of the exposed timber framing that was there from the sixties, and then, um, uh, re-address the, the fascias and, and the, the overhangs to, to make them a little more complimentary and, and, uh, compatible with the architecture from the original building. I don't know if you have the renderings in this package, um, if we scoot down to that. Yeah, so, well, here are the architectural drawings that will be coming in soon. Um, but you can see the drive-through and the, uh, what we're doing with the, um, and these, these may be slightly off. Uh, there may, we, there's some things we're playing with those front windows, but, uh, we're going to take over those, take those large overhangs and the timber beams back and create, um, uh, cornice fascia that's a little bit more complimentary to what's there. And, um, on the inside, uh, we're trying to keep, uh, some of the historic character of the building, but we are, our front lobby, uh, we will have, uh, we have to do some work there to create a, a handicap lift to get customers up to the new level, and we'll provide a new banking floor on that ground floor. Most of the work is, is just happening on the ground floor. Uh, right now, there's no real plans for the second, and the ba-, and the attic is, is just the attic. There may be some office space up there at some point. And, um, and again, we're tearing down that back addition, and we'll have to reframe the roof, uh, on, on the backside of the building as well, so. And I think there may be a color in there somewhere, or not? There's not, Ed, come on. I think I'll just hear.
Oh, nice, thank you.
Thank you. A question, some of the renderings I had, it looks a little bit different on some of these other ones up here, but there's a structure on the northwest corner of the property that looks like it's actually serving the, the house with unit to the north side. In other renderings, it looks like it's part of your property. I'm just kind of.
Oh, go back to the site plan, if you could. Yeah, there is a, um, there's a garage, it would be in the northwest corner.
Northwest corner, right.
Yeah. Here you go. Yeah, in the... Yeah, a point, want to point that out, Ed?
Yeah, that's it, that's.
Yeah, okay. That's a, uh, garage that, the original garage was extended, that, as hers has got longer, I guess, so, uh, but that's coming down.
Okay, so that is on your property. Cause I couldn't tell some of the lines, it looks like, okay, thank you.
And then the parcel, the, the addition, the house over there on the, on that parcel there, at some point will come down as well.
I mean, it's a exciting project for that area. It's a great service.
Yeah, no, and it serves the need for that community, so.
And so you are planning to move out of eight-hundred, uh, State Street office?
Yeah.
Is that correct? I'm just sorry, the eight-hundred State Street.
Eight-hundred, uh, State.
Salina, I'm sorry, Salina Street project.
We'll be moving up to this.
Moving out, okay, great.
Other questions? I have, I have one about your, uh, drive, the exit from the site. How will you discourage, or even better, prevent people from, uh, your customers from turning north onto Salina Street? That seems like that's, could be, uh, traffic issue.
Yeah, we have, there's a center turn lane that they can turn to.
Down Salina.
Down Salina, yeah, you can see the two yellow lines through the middle, so, uh, someone can turn left to head north and go into that lane and then move into the northbound lane.
I confirm, they call that a suicide lane.
They put them in.
So a left-hand turn will be permitted upon access?
Yes, yes. We haven't had, I mean, there hasn't been any discussions with any. They're pretty, yeah, this is not a highly-traveled portion.
And engineering didn't raise anything about that.
So I was just going to comment on that. Uh, DPW Transportation Planner has commented on, uh, the exit, um, area to utilize striping and signage, which will channelize departing vehicles from the site into a single file and restrict movements to a right turn only to minimize left turn conflict. And he cites a section here, um, I'm assuming this is from, um, M U C T D or something, but he references A A D T sixty-three hundred. That's something we can look at with a site construction permit as well with the team.
So potentially that feature might be revised, uh, in consultation with the, um, was that DPW or the engineer's office?
Uh, DPW Transportation Planner.
Okay. Okay, for any final questions for the applicant team? Okay, uh, thank you for the presentation. Are there individuals who wish to speak in favor of either of these two project components? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and your comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to either, um, proposed action? If so, come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. We appear not to have any speakers, uh, on these two items, so we'll close public comment on this and now turn to our, um, Seeker review.
We can do, uh, just, just one comment. Um, just want to point out to the board, uh, on the, uh, summary page for this project, uh, under staff analysis, so the, the couple of factors listed there, um, just speaking to, uh, that, as zoning administrator, did, I did make a determination, a use determination that the attached drive-through facility, uh, for a fi- financial institution use type, um, is allowed, uh, because it's deemed as part of the financial institution's primary use, so this is an attached structure, um, to the existing building. So I just want to point that out. And, uh, even though the adjacent zone districts are not residential, uh, titled, um, that, you know, the retaining walls, fences, and landscape features, uh, being proposed will buffer, um, the onsite parking areas from nearby, um, residences, even though they're not in our districts, meaning like the letter R residential, um, that there are dwelling units nearby, so they'll, they'll be mitigating that, uh, as much as possible. And type of business and the hours of operation will kind of control that as well, um, when cars are using the, the parking lot and when they're not. Business hours, right? Standard business hours. That's it.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to review the short EAF Part One? That's in your packet?
Yes.
You're familiar with the eleven questions of the short EAF Part Two? Do you believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts?
No.
Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under Seeker and complete the EAF Part Three accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a Seeker motion? Is there such a seeker motion?
Move to grant a negative declaration.
And just for clarification, is that negative declaration pertains to both items?
That's correct.
Discussion on the seeker motion before us. And all in favor of the seeker motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker declaration is approved for both. And this body may now proceed to act upon the individual components, the major site plan review, and the resubdivision.
Move approval of the major site plan review 2407.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Site plan review for MASPR 2407, North Salina Street is approved. Now we are prepared for our, to act upon the resubdivision for the same site, R-24-20.
Move approval of R-24-20 as presented with no additional conditions.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Resubdivision for the 1200 block, North Salina Street is approved, R-24-20. Thank you for your presentation. And we move forward in the agenda.
Okay, this is another multiple project companion pieces, so I'll introduce this. It includes a major site plan review, MASPR-24-08, also a resubdivision. This is located at 411 and 413 University Avenue. Owner, Jack Mamie, applicant, Dave Mosher.
Hello, Jack Mamie, 188 E 78th Street, New York, New York, 10075. With me is architect Dave Mosher.
Dave Mosher, owner of Mosher Architects, 1035 Seventh North Street, Suite 1A, Liverpool.
We are proposing to resubdivide and demolish two existing structures comprising of a three-unit and a seven-dwelling unit building, both over, well over 100 years old, ending, you know, nearing the end of their useful lifespans, to construct a nine-story with below-grade parking, 47-unit building with six, seven, six parking spaces. Yeah, if there's any questions, we could get into it.
Are there questions for the applicant? So this two will have 10% of the units affordable?
Yeah, so just to break this down, page 256 kind of outlines where the different pieces are for this project overall. The first is the major site plan review. That's on page 257, followed by the special use permit on page 265, and then the seeker review, Part 1, 2, and 3. Or, excuse me, I'm reading from the wrong page.
Yeah.
Getting ahead of myself here. You're like, where are you going? I'm very sorry.
214, starting?
No, I need to back up. Hold on, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. I'm already jumping ahead here.
Right. Road map is on page 215.
I got it here. So major site plan review, page 215, resubdivision 240, and then seeker review 223 to 255. But those factors and recommended conditions, as previously noted in other projects, are on page 215 where we note the affordability requirement is 10%. So we can note the, should you take an action to approve, that we would include those recommended conditions under the staff report.
There are six of those.
So I guess I have a question about the sixth condition there, which is a reference to the pending consideration by the Syracuse Landmark Preservation Board on suitability of the project and its impact on Grace Church, et cetera. I'm just wondering about that because in terms of acting tonight, I have no idea what they're going to come up with. I don't know if you've had any preliminary discussions with them, or do you have any ideas about how you might address the issues that they might raise? Because at least the renderings of the building right now look sort of out of place for the area in terms of its impact on Grace. So I'm just kind of curious about that.
You know, the timing's a little funny because we got scheduled to go there after this meeting.
Right.
So I guess what we would request, if it's possible, is to just, you know, if you guys decide to act to approve tonight, that it'd be conditioned on an approval from Landmark. We have not had any specific discussions with them, although they did not raise any concern in a pre-development meeting.
Did not?
No.
Okay. Does staff have any more information on that, where we are with that process?
Father conferring, can I ask about the parking? So the below-grade parking is basement level? Did I read it right?
Yes.
And there's six spots in the basement?
Yes.
That's it?
That's it.
So you're only building a small portion of the front basement, right? Where's the?
We, the way the site is, we tried to see if we could get more, and it doesn't really work with the drive aisle sizes to kind of put them on, going, I guess horizontally.
Right.
Otherwise, you'd just be pushing those spots all the way to the back, which doesn't really gain you anything, it's just more parking aisle. So that's why we decided to add a few other things back there.
Okay.
Would those six parking spots be available for tenants or for employees? How would you guys decide how those parking lots would be, those parking spaces?
They'll be for tenants, yeah. Cause, cause, you know, there's only six, obviously, so.
Right.
We'll have to figure something out for, you know, employees on site, whether they park on the street, or maybe they bike or walk to work because it's in a, you know, heavy pedestrian area. And we added some extra bike parking as well.
So question for staff, if possible. So under the now long-forgotten code, we used to talk to developers and project managers about making arrangements with a private lot. Is that no longer necessary under the current code, under rezone?
Parking?
Mm-hmm.
Do we allow off-site parking? No, the question is, do six parking spaces satisfy the code at 40 apartments?
At 47s.
Forty-seven apartments. So I believe it's that.
And an MX4, and it's mixed use because there's.
Mixed income.
Mixed incomes automatically gets 50% parking. Transit.
You added an off-question. Okay.
Thank you.
This is just something that we need for the record.
Yeah, and to speak to that, because I'm sure that's every, that's kind of the thing that jumps out here with this project. I would never have put this together if I didn't think from a demand perspective it would work, from marketability. I'm seeing year over year, less and less kids bringing cars to school. I think, you know, people optimistically think cars are going to start to drive you around eventually, and you don't even need to drive it, and maybe it'll just be one giant rideshare network. So especially with college students, I'm seeing the number of car users going down. I would add to that, though, you know, if it was a further location from the school that maybe you would want more parking, but being that this is, you know, only probably, I would say a four-minute walk to the business school and a five-minute walk to the Starbucks that used to be there and the main campus, that there would not really be a demand issue here in regards to parking.
Fairly strong transit corridor as well.
Yes. Yeah, it's on the connective corridor, you have the bus line, you have bike lanes, and yeah, that's.
Do you foresee mostly your units probably being used by students?
Likely, because, you know, it's a four-bedroom heavy building, and obviously, you know, we would rent to anyone, but I would imagine, if I was guessing to answer your question, it would mostly be students.
Additional questions for the applicant?
So I'd ask a question about the Syracuse Landmark Preservation Board, and you were conferring, and then we wanted other questions.
That's what we were talking about.
Right.
Okay, so the Landmark Preservation Board, because this is across from a landmark structure, designated structure, they'll make recommendations, but they won't take action, as it were. So normally, I would have you do seeker first because if they were going to need to take action, like if it were a certificate of appropriateness. But because they're only in a review capacity, you don't have to do seeker. And in fact, I'd recommend that you not do seeker till they've been to the Landmark Preservation Board because one of the items in seeker is assessing the impact on historic resources. So I would hold this open, that's my suggestion, until after the SLPB reviews the project.
Does that mean we need to hold, we should hold the resub open too, or can we act on the resub tonight? But if we act on the resub, we have to do seeker?
Yeah, I mean, we, as staff, we tend to want you to keep things as a package. There's no real disadvantage to hold the resub along with everything else because if they don't get everything else, then, then they have a resub divided property that they may or may not want to use that way.
Can I ask one question? Sorry to interrupt. If, if they were not to have any issue on Thursday, would it then, because maybe there's a chance that they have no problem with it, would it, would it be possible to approve it conditionally based on that? And then if there's any issues, we can come back anyway? But that way, that way, we don't have to come back if they do approve?
I think it's awkward to approve it conditionally with the intention that you might come back. It's better to just hold it for three weeks, because it's only three weeks since our meeting on Thursday. It's not indeterminate or a long period of time. I mean, that's just my general sense, is that that would probably be a neater way to do it, without knowing what the preservation board is going to say. And it would be nice if that could have happened before.
Found another interesting bit of language in rezone. So as I said, we, I'm recommending that you not conduct seeker prior to the landmark preservation review of the project because of the historic component of seeker. You would have to do seeker to do, to act, which would include the resub. So my suggestion is that you hold it open, and you cannot approve it conditionally without seeker.
Right.
That sounds pretty conclusive that we will hold both. Await the action from the Landmark Preservation Board and then return to this at our next meeting.
They can get on the next agenda.
Yeah, it's only gonna happen for 20.
Yeah, that's three days from now, so. However, while we are still here and on this topic, unless there are further questions for the applicant.
No, we have to make a motion for that, to hold.
No, I was going to ask for public comment, which we haven't done yet, so, but I'll allow the conclusion of questions from the commission members before we proceed to that. I don't see a lot of folks around, so I have an inkling of what might happen, but we need to.
Well, you can open and close the public comment.
It'll be in the hall.
Any final questions of the applicant?
Well, he and his expert is here, are here?
None at the moment.
All set, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. And is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address for the record, and then your comments. So we have no speakers for this application, no additional speakers other than the presenters. We will close public comment, and as noted earlier, we're now turn our attention to a motion to hold, or just simply hold it open.
You have discretion to hold it, so you don't need a motion. You can't make a motion because you haven't done seeker. You can't act on the application, but it's your discretion, this chair, to hold it.
It's all through the chair. For all the reasons mentioned earlier, it makes perfect sense. So we'll get the benefit of the Landmark Preservation Board review before we return to this. Okay, and thank you. We're not finished yet. We have a few more.
So just been updated that the applicant for the next project, which also had multiple project companion pieces, is not present. They were informed about the meeting this evening and that they're on the agenda today, but I guess we can, I don't know, make an announcement and see if anybody walks in?
Do that, and then we can ask for public comment in case someone is anxious to speak on these and has waited this long, but it's not likely.
Sure. The next project was titled Mango Brothers Realty Inc. Clinic. It included a major site plan review, MASPR-24-18, and a special use permit, SP-24-10, located at 2108-22 Erie Boulevard East.
So if the applicant is here, please come forward, provide your name, address for the record, and a brief summary of the project. Okay, we don't appear to have any representative for the applicant to speak, so I will ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor of this application to come forward to do so now. I will also invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application to come forward to do so now. So we have no speakers of any kind on this one. We will simply hold the hearing open.
Yes, and I'll just remind the commission of the policy you expressed, I don't know when, sometime in my tenure, that you give applicants a second chance for a no-show, and then after that, you'll either vote deny or you'll move it off.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, Q's Cars, we already went through, so that brings us down to other business this evening, all the way to page 291 in your packet. So I'll introduce this as the Ostrom Avenue Dormitory Project. Owner is Syracuse University, applicant is Jennifer Bybee. This is a project on Ostrom Ave with Syracuse University proposing to apply for a resubdivision and a project plan review to establish a dormitory structure here at that location on Ostrom. So Planning Commission may recall, public hearing on the project plan review application, they may call a public hearing, excuse me, pursuant to rezone. Sorry, it's been a long day. But Jennifer is here to introduce the project to the commission. We'll go through that, and based on the information provided, the commission can decide whether or not to have a public hearing on the project plan review application at a future meeting or not. or not.
Hello, thank you for having our item on the agenda. Jennifer Bybee, Assistant Director for Campus Planning for Syracuse University, 1320 Jamesville Ave in Syracuse. And I am here tonight, really mainly with a scheduling slash noticing concern and request, frankly. As Mr. Deshaun noted, we will very soon be submitting two different zoning applications for the new residence hall project. And that would be project plan review application, and also a re-subdivision application. Project plan review application, because the proposed site is located in Sub District Eight of the main campus planned institutional district. The block upon which the project is being proposed is bounded by University Place to the north, Ostrom Ave to the east, Euclid Ave to the south, and Comstock Ave to the west. We are targeting the July 8th Planning Commission-scheduled meeting. And so in consultation with zoning staff, we understand that in order to be scheduled for a public hearing for both the re-subdivision application and the project plan review application, that Planning Commission must vote to do so at the penultimate meeting to the July 8th meeting, which would be this meeting. So we are planning to submit early next week, Monday, targeting Monday, so we can make the July 8th meeting and meet the noticing requirements.
Can you say a little bit about the facility that you plan to...
Yes.
...put on that site?
Sure, and you will soon have many details about it, but we...
I have a question, if I could piggyback on that, because it might be a companion question, I'm not sure. That's why I'm a little bit confused. So the unit that you're proposing for Comstock Avenue, does that back up on this address? Because we don't have any map or anything, some kind of...
Right, so...
Are they related?
There would be an entrance on Comstock Ave, and then there would also be an entrance at the south side of the planned facility, which would be off of Ostrom Ave. So almost in a way, if you can vision, kind of like almost a T-shaped building. And again, we didn't want to jump the gun by having drawings and so forth tonight, because we haven't formally submitted yet, we're pulling everything together. But it would be a new residence hall, and the designated land use is for residential. So the use is compliant with the allowed land use, I mean, the proposed use is consistent with the allowed land use, and also we are having architects design it to conform with zoning regulations. And the re-subdivision portion of the project application, that separate application, is because right now, there are about eleven different parcels that we propose to re-subdivide, because there had been single-family homes on the west side of Ostrom Ave, which are no longer there. So that's why the number of parcels.
So this is the same project that involves the vacant fraternity house that you're proposing to tear down?
It is related to that, that's correct. And that's also why we have not yet submitted our zoning application, because we want to be sure to request the sequencing that we've been told by the city we should follow, and we are going through the Landmark Preservation Board review process, because we do seek to demolish a wood frame structure, which would be part of the footprint for the new building.
Are you on the twentieth agenda for them, too?
Yes, we are.
Busy night.
Well-traveled path.
Can you give us a sense of the capacity for the new facility?
Yes, so it's a new residence hall, it would be approximately 700 beds. And this would be part of a general plan to relocate sophomores onto main campus, from south campus where they currently are.
Okay, okay.
And we did have a pre-development meeting with the city in late April, which was extremely helpful, and we appreciate city staff members' time for that. And we've been, meanwhile, pulling everything together and have been at the Landmark Preservation Board.
What were the findings in that meeting with the city?
Of the pre-development meeting, do you mean? It was helpful in terms of, we wanted us to explain the project, and sort of be aware of city concerns, such as, like, how are you going to handle stormwater? How are you going to handle, you know, everything, from how will the site work, what will the flow of transportation be, et cetera? And so it works really well mutually, because then it gives city reviewers a chance to see ahead of time what we'll be proposing, so they're already a little bit familiar, and also gives us a chance to know what their concerns are, so we can address them upfront as part of the application, and make the whole process, make the project better, but also make the whole process more efficient, too, for everyone.
Order, too, in the long run, I suspect.
Yes.
So our task tonight is to make a determination if this project should, if the commission should schedule a public hearing for this project. Thoughts?
Just, I think Jennifer alluded to, there's two items on the SLPB agenda. One is because this is adjacent to the Thorn...
No, it's not for that reason, it's because we have to seek a demolition permit to...
No, no, there's two items on the agenda for the SLPB. One is consideration of the project, where I think they'll make, on a recommendation basis, because it's across the street or adjacent to...
That's the greatest one, project that we just did.
To Rose Garden, Thorn...
Oh.
Thorne Park, Rose Garden. And then, so that's on the SLPB agenda for recommendation. And then the other item on the SLPB agenda is whether they're going to pass on to you proposed, they'll determine whether they're going to recommend to you a local designation of the currently vacant fraternity.
So, there is a question there, and I don't know if it's the forum to discuss it. Is there any issue of opposition from the owner of the vacant house? Is there a National Fraternity Board that...
No, because the unit, well, the actual, the owner, we bought it several years ago, and my understanding is that the people we bought it from are wholeheartedly in favor of it being demolished.
There's no charter, and there's no, there's no national corporation that would stand in the way of that property?
Not that I'm aware of, and I can certainly follow up on that. I do want to, though, clarify, our understanding of Thursday's meeting at Landmark Preservation Board is not, in terms of advisory review at all, related to a potentially replacement project, or the association with the National Register District. It's, if you're referring to Thorne Park proximity, it's just with regard to the, whether we can demolish the building.
No, that's incorrect, there is a, I just read the agenda today, my recollection is, sadly, I can't get in my office right now, but my recollection is, the agenda also has the Thorne Park item on it for discussion, because of the proximity to Thorne Park, as well as, so at the last Preservation Board meeting, they determined that they're going to, so the way it works is for a local designation, they review it and deliberate, and decide whether to designate, and they refer, they recommend to you, and then you have a public hearing, and you recommend to come and counsel for a public hearing. So that item, the board thought there was enough in their last discussion, that they would pursue local designation, they'll make a decision on Thursday.
I have one question, Jennifer.
Yes.
Do you have full site control of the eleven parcels?
Yes, the university owns them all, yes. So just again, to be clear, the reason why we're seeking that there be a determination and request for there to be public hearing, is that, well, first of all, this re-subdivision requires public hearing, anyway. And as Mr. Deshaun indicated, there is some discretion whether or not there is one required for project plan review. We feel in this case that would be appropriate, given that it is a new building, and they are basically companion documents. And our sort of scheduling concern is because, like many applicants, we don't want to end up in a situation where the board might be well and ready to vote, but it hadn't been noticed as a public hearing. So that's why I'm here tonight, looking to the July 8th agenda.
I misspoke, I don't see the Thorne Park thing on the agenda, I think it was in the minutes, when I reviewed the minutes from their last...
Because it's not mentioned in a notice of public hearing.
Right. Which is neither here nor there for the decision, you have to make whether to have a public hearing on this application, that's pending.
No problem, I'm glad we're all on the same page.
Yeah. Definitely was in the minutes.
No problem.
I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing at our next meeting, to consider the applicant's request.
Second. Discussion on this motion?
It seems pretty similar to the Catholic Center situation, where we approved having a hearing, we had that everything was perfectly fine.
That was exactly...
I'm sure that's, you know, but we do need to hear what the Landmark Preservation Board says.
Oh, definitely, absolutely, and that was the model we had in mind. And just to be clear, my understanding is, it will be noticed as two separate public hearings, even though it's for the same project, one for the re-subdivision application, one for the project plan review.
Right.
As long as we're being very picky, you know, about things.
It's good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So discussion on that motion? And if there is no discussion, excuse me, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We'll move forward with a public hearing, then.
And just to clarify for you, for the future, in your minds, so the vote you just took didn't require seeker, because you weren't voting on an action that someone's proposing? I just want to make sure.
Last item, we have a three-mile limit in the town of Salina, 3S-24-12. Applicant is Nolan Kokoris. Engineering did review and approve this three-mile limit.
That's what I love to hear. Is there a motion, then, for action on the three-mile limit, 3S-24-12?
Move approval of 3S-24-12 as presented?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The three-mile limit in the town of Salina is approved. Is there anything else that we need to deal with this evening?
No.
In that case, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We adjourned at moments before eight o'clock.
Just in time for the Olympic swimming trial.
We have to pick an Olympic team the next couple of weeks, because Olympics are this summer.
I think it's so strange, you know, when you run Olympics, they have all these trials months and...